Sorry guys, alright, good evening, it is now seven oh one, Thursday, September twenty fifth. I would like to call the meeting to order. We are calling North Feroz Community Council meeting to order, roll call please.
Commencing roll call, Vice Chair Salmon. Councilmember Esther. Councilmember Whitney. Councilmember Daily.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Parisi. Councilmember Rosco. Councilmember Afonte. Here. And Chair Prada.
Present.
Thank you.
Just a quick announcement, we do have interpreter joining us this evening. If you would like to listen to meeting in Spanish, please use a headset provided in the back table. We will now move to public comment. Does anyone have public comment on any topic not on the agenda? As a reminder, the council may not discuss or take action on items not on the agenda.
We do have a speaker slipped submitted, so when I call your name, you will have two minutes to speak, so Mike Morris. Have to come up to the room.
Good evening, my name is Mike Morris, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I've lived in the area for forty-five years, paid a lot of taxes. And I wasn't notified that the county purchased thirty-three thirty-five Spring Street for a group home. Also, my neighbors weren't notified either. I don't think it's been on the agenda here either. So it seems kind of a mystery that you're going to put a group home that may have mentally disturbed people, people with drug addicts or problems and criminal histories in my neighborhood without letting us know. The house itself is not up to code, it's a fire hazard. We all know what happened to the ghost ship building in Oakland, burned down, thirty-four people got killed. This home is not up to code. It could set on fire and set the whole neighborhood on fire. We know what's been happening to California neighborhoods. Fires. Star Vista, the company has a criminal history, is going to operate probably this home. And one of their employees embezzled seven hundred thousand dollars. And we don't want the same thing to happen. I did contact one member of the board, she did give me a brief information about it. But in general, the board, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors has not contacted me. I've sent notices, emails, so it's like a big mystery. It's kind of confusing, a little alarming that taxpayers that have, you know, a stake in this don't get to know what's going on. There's already in the neighborhood, there's a mental health facility at twenty-six eighty-sixth Spring Street that has mentally ill people and people with criminal histories walking around. So we don't need another place, it's near, it's near half school, it's near a lot of families. So I just want to let you guys know about it because maybe some of you don't even know about it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Last call for public comment. No one will comment, back to you Chair.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Sir Mike. I now make a motion to approve the agenda that we have tonight.
Second. Commencing roll call vote for the agenda, Vice Chair Salmon.
Here.
Councilmember Daily. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Parisi. Councilmember Afonte.
Yes.
And Chair Prada.
Yes.
Question.
Great, we will now move forward. Move along with our first item on the agenda. An informational presentation by the Immigrant Services Team from the Office of Community Affairs.
Through the Chair, I just want to note that we do have Vice Chair Salmon on line right now, so he's on. Hello, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Alright, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to be here tonight and speak to you, council members, community members. My name is Cory Schwabinai Garcia, I'm here on behalf of the County of San Mateos Office of Community Affairs Immigrant Services Team. The Immigrant Services Team is a dedicated team to making sure that our immigrant community members and all our community members really know their rights, what they are, how to use them and are also connected to resources that can help everybody live and thrive in our community. So today I'm here to give you guys a super brief rundown of know your rights so that you can share those in community and also know them yourselves. First, I want to start off by noting that I am not a lawyer, so I can't provide specific legal advice, I will not in this presentation. We're going to keep it very high level. Nothing that I share in this presentation should be construed as legal advice. So I'm not going to get into too many specifics or scenarios. We're just going to touch upon some basic tools that you can use and share to protect yourselves, your families, and your fellow community members. Alright, so our plan for tonight, usually I talk about some demographics and context for the county of San Mateo, but because our time here is limited, we're going to jump straight into our rights and some key resources that will help you understand your rights, utilize them and protect our immigrant community members. Then last, I'll talk about how you can stay connected with us if you have questions about any of the content of this presentation or want to keep learning about anything that we discussed tonight. Okay, so I want to start off first by reiterating that no matter where you come from, no matter what language you speak, no matter what your immigration status is, every single person has rights. And no matter how the law changes, no matter what you hear in the news, these rights are guaranteed to us by the Constitution. The Constitution does not change overnight. So I'm going to start really quickly by outlining some key rights that we want to discuss, what they mean, and then we're going to go into some other helpful resources you can use to reinforce your rights. And then we're going to talk about a scenario where you can kind of apply everything together and see in practice what an encounter with immigration enforcement could look like utilizing these rights to protect yourself. So first, everybody has the right to remain silent. You have the right to not incriminate yourself, you don't have to volunteer information that could be used against you in the court of law, in an immigration court. Nobody knows whether you are a citizen or have papers or not just by looking at you, right? We're not going to volunteer that information. If you stop and talk to a stranger on the street and they ask, what's your name, where are you from? Would you answer that question? Perhaps not, because why does anybody need to know that about you? You also have the right to be free of unreasonable searches. Now, what is an unreasonable search? An unreasonable search is one that is conducted without a warrant or without permission. You don't have to give someone permission to search your car or to search your home unless they have a warrant. And that warrant has to be signed by a judge. You can find examples of what valid warrant, a valid judicial warrant looks like online versus an administrative warrant. I advise you to do that, familiarize yourself with what that looks like and share it. You also have the right to refuse to sign documents without first speaking to a lawyer. So a lot of these things we intuitively would or would not do while we're out existing in the world are rights that are granted to us by the Constitution. You wouldn't sign a paper that somebody puts in front of you in a language that you didn't understand in words that were too dense for you to understand, too complicated. Why? Because you don't know what it's saying, you don't know what implications it's going to have for your life. In immigration context, that paper put in front of you could be the difference between staying here or getting deported. And getting deported could be the difference between life and death for many community members. So that's why it's so serious that we consider these rights, consider our privacy. You also have the right to speak to a lawyer. This is kind of a tough one because in immigration court, even though you have the right to speak to a lawyer, it won't be guaranteed to you the same way that it would, for example, in a criminal proceeding. You would still have to pay for a lawyer and obtain a lawyer on your own time. So we really do want to encourage people to try to get a legal consult, an up-to-date one, if you can, before you think you're going to need it. If you already had a legal consultation several years ago, try to get an up-to-date one. They say that, and I know it's not easy to obtain a lawyer for a lot of community members, especially if you're low income. But we do have on our website, which I will share later, smc rapid response dot org, a list of trusted legal providers. We know that there's also legal fraud, there's notarios in our community, people who sometimes misrepresent themselves as lawyers, which is why we also want to try to circulate that list and find the trusted legal providers as soon as possible, right? So you can get the ball and understand the facts of your case from somebody that's legitimate and that you feel comfortable with. Okay, so those are the basics of your rights. It is a Thursday evening, it is the end of the week, and I'm sure that everybody is very tired right now. And so I'm going to summarize everything in the easiest way that I can, this amazing resource that we have called a red card. When you're tired, when you're stressed out, when you've had a bad day, a long day, even on a good day, right? Sometimes, at the end of the day, it's hard for me to remember what I had for breakfast in the morning. A lot of us are also conditioned to be really friendly, to be really obedient. When somebody asks us a question, we want to volunteer information, we want to prove that we haven't done anything wrong. The amazing thing about a red card, and they come in so many different languages, you'd be very hard for us to find one to come in, is the red card basically summarizes these exact same critical constitutional rights that I just mentioned. So if you can't remember them off the top of your head, you have this card in your pocket, in your purse, in your backpack, on your desk, wherever it is, wherever you go, then right there, you don't have to remember anything off the top of your head. You don't have to memorize it, you can read it directly. If somebody comes from immigration enforcement, you encounter them in the street or wherever, you can read them the red card directly. So one side of the red card is in your preferred language, whatever that may be, to remember those rights. And then the other side that starts off with, I do not wish to speak with you, that is you asserting your Fifth Amendment right right there. And you could just read it over and over and over and over again, and every single time you do that, you're exercising your rights. So another really critical resource and a very special resource that we have is the Rapid Response Line of San Mateo County, two zero three six 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 four four seven two. This is just as important as a red card. I really remember, recommend that you save this in your phone, that you write it down, that you keep it with you wherever you go. This Rapid Response Hotline is active twenty-four seven, seven days a week. It is staffed by bilingual volunteers, they also have interpretation into different languages. So you can call that Rapid Response Hotline for a variety of reasons. First of all, we want to spread power, not panic. It is so easy for a rumored sighting that may or may not be immigration enforcement, it might be local police, it might be nothing at all, just somebody in, I don't know, a big blank van. And then a rumor gets spread and says, I think I saw immigration enforcement outside of Chavez Market. By the time that that spreads on WhatsApp, on Facebook, wherever, nobody knows what the context was, right? And now everybody's scared to go out and get groceries, they're scared to go to school, they're scared to take their kids to school. That's exactly what we want to try to avoid. So this Rapid Response Hotline is something that anybody can call anytime, and you can share details, as detailed as possible, time, place, what you think you saw, and they will send verifiers out to go see who exactly was there. If it was immigration enforcement or if it was local police or whoever, and then they report back on social media. So community members can know exactly what happened and when. They also do accompaniment to immigration court and ICE check-ins. Right now, people are scared to go to their check-ins, they're scared to go to immigration court because they think it's going to result in a detention or deportation. If you don't go to a check-in, if you don't go to court, you're basically guaranteeing those outcomes. So you do want to continue to encourage community members, as afraid as they may be, to go to immigration court or check-ins. But if you call that same hotline as soon as possible, or even the night before, which we don't recommend because, you know, everybody has a need for accompaniment, then they'll send someone to go with you. Now, the Rapid Response Hotline is not staffed by lawyers. These verifiers who are not lawyers, they are community members. But the Rapid Response Hotline can connect people to urgent legal support if they're detained. So I think that a really important thing about this hotline is that you don't have to go it alone. The worst thing that can happen is that somebody is detained and nobody else sees it, nobody knows what happened, nobody knows where that person goes, right? That's what this hotline is there to prevent. And this legal service connection is so important for people who might not already have their own lawyer. So important resource, very friendly people, we really recommend that you share this. Okay, so this is the scenario I mentioned, that can kind of see how you put everything together. What happens if immigration enforcement is at your door? No matter where you are, no matter what happens, no matter who you encounter, the most important thing is that you stay calm, okay? Stay calm, don't escalate, don't run away, stay wherever you are and stay inside. You have the right to remain silent and you don't have to answer questions. You can use that handy dandy red card that everybody's just seen, you can pass it under the door, you can read it out loud, you can show it through the window. Because you have the right to be free from unreasonable searches, you don't have to open your door, okay? If you do open your door, for example, if somebody in your home is a citizen and wants to go talk to immigration enforcement or read the red card in person, step outside, close and lock the door behind you, okay? It's hard when someone's face to face to assert your rights, right, to speak back. And if you do keep the door open and let somebody enter, that could be considered implicit consent, right? And then they can do that search, that's considered perishing. So you can ask to see that warrant through the window, you can ask it to be slipped under the door. Why? Because without a warrant, that is an unreasonable search. Lastly, call the Rapid Response Hotline, that hotline is staffed twenty-four seven, as I mentioned, there is no question that is too small. If you think the immigration enforcement is there for you, for somebody else, you see them across the street, you call that hotline and they'll send someone out to verify what's going on, report back. Again, the community is safer because everybody knows exactly what they're facing when. The last resource I want to share with you all is called a family preparedness plan. It is a dense document, but it is a useful document because this is a step-by-step guide to an immigration emergency preparedness or any emergency, right? We all like to think that we're never going to find ourselves in a situation where we're incapacitated and our loved ones are left to fend for themselves, but we have to prepare for those scenarios before they happen. So the same way that you talk about earthquake preparedness or natural disasters, we want to talk about immigration enforcement, right? And have difficult conversations with our loved ones, with our kids, if we have them, about what exactly we would do if a parent was detained or deported. So this family preparedness plan is a step-by-step guide to have that discussion. What are the kind of things you want to think of, what are the kinds of records that you would pass on to a caretaker? Who would that caretaker be if they had to step in on your loss? So you can scan that QR code or find it on our website, we recommend that you share that plan and everybody can fill it out, whether you're an immigrant or not. If you have questions about any of the resources we've discussed tonight, you want to see more detailed scenarios or questions, you can connect with us at smc rapid response dot org, that's right there, and we can probably circulate it after. There is more resources on our website, including everything that I shared, but in more detail. You can print your own red cards in a variety of different languages, and if we don't have a language of your choice, we can probably connect you with that. Those emergency preparedness plans are there. And if you see towards the bottom of that page where it says know your rights, our legal partners at KNIC, the Catholic Legal Immigration Network, we have a lot of different legal partners who create these resources that we then escalate to the community. They have different scenarios, like do your rights change at the border, do they change in airports? If so, how would you exercise them? So if you have further questions, I recommend that you check those out, they're amazing free resources in a variety of languages to be shared. So we're almost to the end of our presentation, I want to talk about next steps, what can we do in this room? Everybody here is a community leader, that's why we're here, that's what brought us together. So I want to need to think about in your sphere of influence, in your family, in your community, the people you encounter day to day, is there anybody who needs this information? And even if you don't think there is, you never know who you're going to encounter that might need that red card, that might need this family preparedness plan. That doesn't mean you have to start every conversation with it, but you know, think about who you come across and how you would communicate things as a parent, as an immigrant, as the child of an immigrant, right? I was born a US citizen, my mom wasn't, she was naturalized, she came here as an asylee in the eighties, and I've had to sit down and have these conversations with her. But no matter how long you've been here, there's still nothing to be lost from preparing for the worst-case scenario. So take that red card, take a lot of red cards, keep one in your purse, in your pocket, bring it with you in your car. Find that emergency preparedness plan, walk through it, again, it doesn't have to be just for immigration enforcement, it's useful for a lot of things. And respond. Save that Rapid Response Hotline number two zero three six 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 four four seven two, it's also on the red card, so you don't have to remember it. Save the hotline number in your phone, share it with your community. Stay connected with us, you can check out any of our social media accounts or our website. You can also send us an email, no question is too small. We're happy to share resources, connect you with resources or other like-minded community organizations doing similar work. You can also check out our website, as I mentioned, to download these same resources or even better ones. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, it's been wonderful to be in the community.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any comments from council members, please?
Thank you so much for sharing this, I will not share this in my report, but this is top of mind. I live in a most obviously giving area, and the people are concerned with everybody wondering if, when ICE is coming and what are the resources available. And so I have a couple of questions, one is, how have you already distributed these very helpful cards? And how can we, as community members, offer support you in that? And a super tactical question, which is, I, I will say that number, but if, what would happen if you called the San Mateo County Sheriff's Non-Emergency Line? Sorry, too harder, I'm not able to.
Okay, I'll start with the sheriff's line, I can't speak to that. I don't believe that they would be able to give you out any information. Are you talking about like you would call them and say like, hey, was this police or was this ICE?
Or just any reporting or anything, like if somebody weird came to my door and my guard was structured inside, like, I probably, before this presentation, are that one of them I go to? And that might, and that's probably a lot of people's go-to, so I'm just curious what they would do and their... Because that might be a lot of people's go-to.
Right, I think that's a good question to ask the sheriff. I don't really think that there's a right or a wrong answer, I think you should use your best judgment. If you feel unsafe, then your first call should definitely be to the non-emergency line. If it's specifically immigration-related or you think it might be, then call the Rapid Response Hotline and they will probably direct you back to the non-emergency line if they feel like it's something, or ten-nine-one-one. And there have been scenarios like that where someone says, I don't know, I see someone outside, they have a gun. The Rapid Response Hotline is going to say you need to call the police, we can't handle that. So, you know, use your best judgment about what you think is the best answer to keep yourself and your community safe. That's my answer for that first question. In terms of what community members' instincts are, I would recommend, the Rapid Response Hotline is a thing that's kind of difficult to explain if you just see the flyer, right? And they say, you know, call if you have immigration concerns, but a lot of people have the question of like, who are these people? What do they do? How can I trust them with my information? So that's something that community members and council members like you can definitely help us out with and say, hey, these are community members just like us. You don't have to share your name if you don't feel comfortable doing that, you don't have to share any specific identifying information, tell them what you're comfortable telling them, and then they'll send someone out just to see what's going on. And most of the rapid responders are, you know, people with pretty stable migration statuses. So if you don't feel comfortable going outside to intervene because you don't have documentation, then someone else can go respond, that does, right? And then, you know, share that information everywhere. So if you can continue to familiarize yourselves with Rapid Response Hotline and explain it to people, that would be an amazing thing. In general, I think we always struggle to reach people, especially at immigration-related events right now because people don't necessarily want to identify themselves as immigrants, right? You might be presumed to be an immigrant or presumed to be undocumented because of your skin color, because of your language, because of where you work. So anytime that you have a community space where you know you're reaching people who feel safe and comfortable with you and feel like they can open up to you about the situation, or at least walk up and take a red card that comes from you, you know, with a smile on your face, that's how you can help us. We've done a lot of canvassing, my colleagues in the Office of Community Affairs, I know we've, we track when we give out red cards at a presentation, whether it's digital or in person or at an event, we've given out seventy-six thousand red cards, I believe, in the past year or two, which I think is pretty powerful for a team of like five. So we really are trying and going out and knocking on doors and walking into businesses and NFO and introducing ourselves, building enough conversation with rapport with people over years, right? So they know who we are, they trust us enough to say like, okay, I believe that thing you're handing me is private. But anytime that we can have reinforcement, and you guys know what that looks like best, maybe you have a relationship with a specific community-based organization, maybe you have a relationship with a specific block of businesses. Whatever idea you have to give out these red cards and this information, it might just be a better idea than ours to have leveraged those relationships, right, that you have with people to share these resources. And, you know, whatever you read on our website about how to explain these, putting things into your own words and into your own experience, right, and saying, as a parent, I would use this family preparedness plan. As a person who lives in this community, I would want to know who I could call if I thought I saw an immigration officer, right? So use those opportunities for connection and relationships that you already have to escalate these resources and elevate them to people who might need them, that's the most powerful thing that you can do, and you don't need a law degree to do that. Through the Chair, I think Emma has her hand up there.
Emma, will you can hear me?
Hey, yeah, thank you, guys. I also wanted to add that the Rapid Response Network is funded by the county, it's actually funded by my office. So it is a group of, and through Faith in Action, who is administering it and legal aid. But Faith in Action administers what is the Rapid Response, so they are trusted members. They're doing it on behalf of the county to really educate, build awareness, and also ensure safety for everybody. So we're, it is purely verifying, one, to verify if in fact there is ICE activity, and two, should you need accompaniment, they have, I think, over three hundred volunteers that will accompany people if they're going to court. And also work with an attorney and get consultation, and all of that is at no cost. I think that's important to really also share that all of this is at no cost to the resident. And I think to the person, I think that was Kelly that might have, and I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing from here. Kelly, if you or anybody in the community feels uncertain and unsafe, you call nine-one-one. If you have, you have some concerns about whether there's ICE activity, you could call the, the Rapid Response Network, which is the, the phone number that I think is listed on the, on the slide deck or on the back of the card. But again, and they could verify, they'll send out verifiers, observers to confirm if that is ICE activity. We're not harboring, we're not holding, you know, hiding, we are just verifying, observing, and making sure everyone is safe. That's the intent. Now, one of the other things that we also fund, and I'm sorry, I'm going to just add to a piece, is provide legal represent, legal Rapid Response Services, which is an emergency or urgent attorney. And that really is to afford and ensure that that individual has spoken with an attorney, we deploy them immediately, the services are available twenty-four hours, and they try to get it before any, anybody is detained and moved as quickly as possible. The one thing I could tell you is there is so, so much uncertainty that we are moving as quickly as possible, and that's why having the intel and we have staff positioned at the courts at Samson in San Francisco, ready and activated. And if you're not signed up to the alert, follow us because we also, when there is something to push out from Faith in Action, those alerts go out daily as well, so I encourage you to follow us or, you know, sign up for that distribution as well.
Great, thank you, Emma. Is there anyone else? Great. Thank you, Emma. Is there anyone else online? No, uh, yes, please.
Thank you, Chloe, for your presentation and for sharing the resources and for your work in general. Um, I wanted to ask if, um, if you conduct these presentations throughout the community regularly and, um, where, um, about, um, like, just in case, you know, um, I can refer somebody to any of these presentations. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Yes, we do do presentations. We will go anywhere someone invites us. We've been to schools, we've been to school district events, we go to community-based organizations, uh, the adult school. We've given them digitally, um, we give them in a variety of locations. If you go to our website, right there, smcrapidresponse.org, you'll find a link towards the bottom of the page where you can request a presentation. You just let us know where and when it's going to be, ideally with, you know, a monthly lead time at minimum. Um, so we can ensure that we have staff. Tell us what language you need to be in, about how many people will be there, and what kind of content you need. Is it a basic know your rights presentation for somebody who doesn't know anything? Do you want us to talk a little bit more about family preparedness plans? You know, again, also with the understanding that we don't have lawyers on our specific staff, so we can only go so far. Um, and we can set up a call to talk about more details and then make sure that we can get out to a space that will reach community members with speed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, council member Aponte, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you for all the information, for the red cards. Um, this weekend, actually, I was able to go all down Middlefield Road, hand out some cards and the yellow flyers uh, from Faith in Action. Um, and a lot of the businesses are very receptive. Some were concerned with putting the yellow poster up, but a lot of them were willing, like, um, I can't remember one off the top of my head, but if you walked down Middlefield, there'll be some more now. And one business was interested in getting more red cards, so, uh, we can refer them to you, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yes. You can also make a request directly if you want to be the one to go send out the red cards. Um, you know, however you think that it will get someone actually reading them.
Yeah, and of course, um, we did this all with our, in our capacity as, you know, community leaders, but not the North Far Oaks Community Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Community leaders are out here doing this work every single day to continue building a safe and welcoming county. We're just here to support that work.
Council member Kathleen?
Yes, we were well received. We got down one side of Middlefield Road and ran out of material. So we're looking to get more materials. We printed what we could with our own finances and bought our own red cards. But, um, a huge supply of them would be super helpful, um, because I think we want to go back again and finish the other side of Middlefield Road. And yes, it was well-received. Um, and things had not been updated in a while, so we pretty much, every business did get a new yellow flyer because it was either not there from when you guys first did it about a year or so ago. Um, but the, all that needs to be updated. And then within North Fair Oaks Down Spring, there's a number of businesses, markets and things like that. So, um, we need those materials and as a community member, I'm more than happy to go out and, and, um, help distribute those with, um, another Spanish-speaking person. That was my challenge, is waiting for someone Spanish-speaking. Unfortunately, I'm not. As a verifier, I just want to let you guys know that it is, um, if you do see something, call in, verifiers go out within five, ten, fifteen minutes. They're alerted what to do. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I think there's only one, um, incident when it comes to sheriff and enforcement within North Fair Oaks and especially within our area between Fifth and Douglas and the narrow streets. Sheriff, uh, they did a, um, a, uh, regular arrest of somebody not related to immigration at all. But it happened to happen right at when school was getting out a block away. And the panic that set out in that neighborhood from sheriffs doing what they were gonna do, you wish they wouldn't do it at the time when school gets released because it does, you know, cause a lot of panic. Traffic was crazy. Um, as a verifier, I went to go look to see what was going on. It wasn't ICE. It, it was okay, but the amount of, um, panic that sets in in the community, it, it's, it's heartbreaking. So, yeah, there's ways in which we kind of wish that sheriffs or any enforcement that needs to be done that's not related to immigration that we can somewhat control or take note of would be helpful, but I know that that's a huge ask, but anyway.
Well, in fact, could I just answer to that question?
Not a question, but.
Uh, well, the statement, Kathleen, that was actually a Santa Clara County, uh, arrest that took place. They had a warrant. Uh, we were notified, we were able to contact Faith in Action immediately and, and really try to push messaging out as quickly as possible. So we do work with law enforcement that, and, and those outside of a jurisdiction. That continues to be strengthening every time. But for that particular incident, uh, we were able to verify with City of Redwood City because they started in the Redwood City jurisdiction, then verify with San, uh, San Mateo County, but in fact, it was Santa Clara County that came and had an arrest warrant. I'm just trying to give some context that, uh, it was, uh, an effort that was, there was a lot of communication and we were able to quickly dispel it and get it to Faith in Action as well.
Thank you for that information, Emma. Are there any other council members that have any comments or questions? No? Um, I do have a couple of questions. The, uh, local number, the six-five-zero-three-six-three, um, that is from your office. And is there, uh, bilingual, um, workers there to ask her any questions?
There are. Our office mostly covers, um, Chinese, Spanish, uh, and English, but we can work to provide, um, interpretation services.
And that number is there for general information, right? That's non, like, non-emergency, that's not for rapid response?
Yes, you're just going to reach our office number, not rapid response, not emergency.
Got it. Thank you. That was my question. And there are no other comments, so thank you so much for your presentation and information.
Thank you. Have an excellent evening.
Um, are there any public comments regarding this specific agenda item?
If you would like to comment on agenda item number four, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or bring a speaker slip up to the court during this time. You'll be given two minutes. We have no speaker slips submitted. And we have no comments online, so no comments. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We will then, um, move on. Uh, we will now move on to item five. We have a presentation from Alta Housing. This is agenda item five, presentation. Magnolia at Redwood Multi-Family Housing Project located at twenty-eight zero-nine El Camino Real in Dunbar and in North Far Oaks. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Hello, council and community members. We're Alta Housing. Here to present on our Magnolia development.
Can we have you speak into the mic?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Sorry. No worries. Thank you. Okay, is that better? Okay. Um, hi, everyone. I'm Janay Gaines. I'm the project manager at Alta Housing and I'm joined today by my colleague.
I'm Daisy Madrigal. I'm Associate Project Manager.
And in the audience, we have Carlos Castellanos, our VP of Real Estate Development, and Stephanie Shipe, our VP of Operations and Programs. Uh, fortunately, we have some members that were not able to make it today. That is Jennifer Wong. She is our Associate Director of Housing. And Tammy Moore, she's our Director of Resident Services. So the development, oh, the development, as it is located at twenty-eight oh-nine El Camino Real in the red circle at the bottom right of this map, um, located near, uh, if, I don't, I can't read it from here, but on the very top of the map, there's like Inspiration Studios. We're right on the other side of the tracks right now at this, this, very nearby. Uh, this development's located on Al Camino, Al Camino Real and Dunbar, next to our Fair Oaks Commons property. Pictured here on the right is our current Fair Oaks Commons property, very near amenities, uh, the shopping center. We have a Samtrans stop right in front of the development and we're not too far from downtown Redwood City.
A little background information on this property. Um, this is going to be a new construction, a hundred percent affordable housing. It will consist of fifty-one units, uh, dedicated for seniors. Uh, we did, we did reserve twenty-five percent of these units to be for extremely low-income household, which is a thirty percent AMI range. Uh, we will have onsite parking, twenty-two spaces as well as, uh, bike, bike parking spaces, um, will be for residents and guests. We have been currently and will plan to, um, go for funding applications. Uh, that is one of, uh, hot topics right now. We do have a few committed sources already, um, nine hundred eighty-three thousand from County of San Mateo, one million from Senator Josh Becker. And as mentioned, we will be continuing to go for more funding, um, specifically from the county in twenty-twenty-six. We are projected to start construction in February of twenty-twenty-nine.
So a little bit about the timeline for this development. As mentioned, we will be applying for more county funding in twenty-twenty-six, state funding in twenty-twenty-seven, building permits twenty-twenty-seven, tax credit funding twenty-twenty-eight with construction start in twenty-twenty-nine. And we anticipate ending construction in twenty-thirty with residents moving in in twenty-three.
We'd like to introduce our property management team. Um, Alta Housing currently manages twenty-nine properties. And we will be using our in-house property management team to manage the site as well as having onsite maintenance tech.
Alta Housing also has in-house resident services. Alta Housing has been providing onsite services for over twenty years. And some of the services we offer are counseling and housing retention, community, uh, community building, education and social services. Uh, we also have partnerships with schools, food banks, volunteers and community agencies such as MHA. They've been a great partner. We've been working with them. Uh, and their services on Fair Oaks Commons currently still our service provider and we have partnered with them to provide services for this development as well. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the council members? Yes, Councilman?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, so with the money that you just mentioned, um, you already have, um, what percentage does that represent from the total that you need? More or less?
Um, the current, uh, committed funds are, I would say, hmm, maybe like less than, less than five per, less than five percent. Yeah.
So you still have some.
We still, yes.
Yeah, we have to throw some parties or something.
Like fundraisers, you know, how many cars can we wash?
Yeah. Get bigger than that.
And my other question is, uh, so is, uh, is your company only the builder or also do you manage the property once it's?
Yes, we do manage, uh, provide resident services and then the development as well.
Okay. Do you have other facilities nearby in the neighborhood or?
Yeah, our Fair Oaks Commons, uh, property, that's twenty-eight twenty-one El Camino Real.
The one right.
Yeah, it was, yeah, in the picture, yes.
Okay. Great. Excellent. Thank you.
And on that facility that you just mentioned next to it, what percentage of that, um, structure is for low income or extreme low income?
It's a hundred percent affordable.
Okay, so it would be essentially the same percentages as far as who the beneficiaries would be?
So that site next door has a different, um, population that is for formerly homeless, uh, individuals and some families. Those are smaller, uh, or about the same size units, but, um, I believe there's more studios in that one, so it's a different population. Our Magnolia development will be for seniors.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
So I have a direct question, which is, what is actually the total project cost? And what happens if you don't raise the money?
Yeah, so our total development costs right now, we're looking at fifty-seven million. Um, we are in conversation with our, um, financial consultant on, you know, where, what our workarounds are. We have been looking at other sources. Um, we don't want to throw in the towel yet, so I don't have an answer to it. If we can't get those sources, we're just hopeful, um, relying on some of these, uh, sources in the future.
Uh, Councilman Aponte, you did you have your hand up?
Thank you. Um, my question, I guess, would be, was the Fair Oaks Commons project also, did it also have a long timeline like this one?
Uh, I don't remember the timeline on that one, but I believe it was a shorter timeline. Uh, that was a project that I worked on when it started construction. I wasn't involved in the pre-construction of that. Uh, there were more funds available, I will say that during that time, the construction of that, uh, the construction completed for Fair Oaks Commons in twenty-twenty. So there, there is more, I'm pretty sure, a shorter timeline.
Thank you. Uh, council member Daly, you had a question?
Thank you for bringing more affordable housing to North Fair Oaks. Um, let's just all hope that we can get you that money. Or I can't, but whatever we can do. Do you reach out to nonprofits for money for, um, this kind of project or?
Um, well, we are nonprofit ourselves. Um, we generally go for local funding and being in unincorporated San Mateo County, we can only apply to San Mateo County funds. Um, then we go after state and federal funding as well.
Okay, and? That was it. Okay, great. I was wondering if federal funding was stopping things or potentially stopping things or putting a halt to things, to be determined, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's to be determined.
Well, keep it up because.
Thank you.
Don't need it. Thank you.
Are there any council members' questions or comments? Uh, my, uh, question is for the existing facility that you have now. Do you have a waiting list for people that are, uh, waiting to get in the building?
Yeah, we do have a waiting list and that's something our property management, uh, oversees.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, Catherine, Emma Daly.
While that property sits empty, are you responsible? Do you own the property?
Yes, we own that property.
Bit of an eyesore from time to time, so I wonder if we could level the car wash and get parking in there in the meantime.
Would you like some flowers as well?
Some flowers and yeah, parking would be great. So yeah, go ahead, turn it out.
Do you have any comments with her? I mean, what, what are you gonna do or what are you doing with the property while this gets underway?
Um, currently, we don't have anything, um, uh, anything planned, uh, but, uh, as far as use, temporary use for the site, um, but we are, uh, anticipating removing some underground storage tanks that were left on the property from its previous uses. Um, we've done the, the work on it. Uh, there's no signs of, uh, extreme contamination, nothing that's, um, on the radar for leakage or anything like that, but those, we're hoping to get that removed soon.
Thank you. All right, and I think that, um, are there any public comments, um, regarding this specific?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. If you would like to comment on agenda number five, please use the raise hands feature on Zoom or bring a speaker slip up to the court during this time. You'll be given two minutes to speak. There are no public comments. Back to you.
Okay, being know that there is no public comment regarding this item, we will then move on, uh, to our last item. Um, we have an update on Mercy Housing. Uh, this is a presentation on the Middlefield Junction Multi-Family Housing Project update located at twenty-seven Middlefield Road in Redwood City.
Hi, thank you for having me back again. Um, so I'm going to give an update as to where we are in construction, where we have at lease up now, because we have officially completed one of our buildings. So next slide, please. So just a, a quick overview again. Um, Mercy Housing is, um, the developer of the project. B A R Architects is our architect and Robert Obiachi is our general contractor. We have funding, um, secured from San Mateo County along with some other funding, um, from the state. And, um, we have a local partner, El Concilio, who, um, helps us connect with the community. Um, also Mercy has, um, a management group who will be managing the site and will also be providing services onsite. Next slide. Um, so continuing to oversight, overview, um, we have a hundred and seventy-nine units, a hundred and four are in building A, a hundred, no, seventy-five are in building A and a hundred and four are in building B. Um, it's a combination of one, twos and threes. Um, twenty units will be reserved for formerly homeless individuals. Um, and as I mentioned, it's split between two buildings. Um, we do have a commercial tenant in building A. It will be a childcare center, um, serviced by Peninsula Family Service. And we're currently, we're about to start construction for that in three weeks. Um, we also have open spaces throughout the site and we do have onsite parking. Unfortunately, it's not one-to-one. Unfortunately, it's not one-to-one, it's one to seventy-five, which totals to a hundred and fifty stalls to the a hundred and seventy-nine units. Next slide. So I just wanted to give an overview of our unit breakdown and our unit type, just as a reminder. So where we are in the schedule, so we have officially completed Building A. We completed on September ninth, which was really exciting. We are projecting Building B, which was the one that suffered the fire, to be complete in January of twenty-six. Marketing and lease-up has already started with Building A. We started in February and we intend to start for Building B in March of next year. And lease-up process has already started. It started in May and concluded in April. For the a hundred and seventy-nine units, we received over two thousand applications. So right now, our team is going through every single application, calling each individual, going through an entry process. We are about three hundred applicants through, but unfortunately, we do have a hundred and seventy-nine units. So we're stopping there, interviewing, touring the units. If they're interested, they're going to be able to start moving in on October first. If not, we go on to the next applicant. So we did a bit of stats on the applicants, so seventy-nine percent of the applicants were from Redwood City and three percent of those were from North Fair Oaks. So out of the two thousand applications, next slide. So just an overview of the site. We go all the way to Middlefield Road where we are revamping a community garden that's in front of the health center. And then we're towards the back split in between two buildings and a muse. Next slide. So right now, as I stated, we just completed Building A, which is a five-story, seventy-five-unit building. So it's housing above with commercial at the ground level, which is a childcare center for thirty-six infants and toddlers. Next slide. So I put a couple photos of the actual building. I know last time I was here was a bunch of rendering, so now I'm showing the real stuff, which is really exciting. So this is the facade of the building facing Middlefield Road. Next slide. Separated a couple. And fun fact, the community center that's open to the community in general to lease up whenever they would like, free of cost, the only cost would be to cover for cleaning, is where those white paint under the brick, that's the full space that can host up to eighty people. And it's fully furnished with tables and chairs right now. Next slide. Wanted a prior view of the other side, which is the part of the entry. So at the far left, it's the entry plaza, which leads to the lobby of Building A. Close up in the second photo and the third is the muse that is car-free. So we are hoping that children can still own to the street and play and ride their bikes and stuff, or people can just walk. The only vehicles can access are by our employees. Next slide. Also, we are going into full furnishing mode right now. So we collaborated with a local muralist, Fernando Martinez. She has worked on other Mercy projects like Casa de la Misión up in San Francisco to do these very organic murals. So this is the one in the lobby of Building A above the mailboxes. We also have murals on every elevator lobby going up. So it's pretty exciting. So you can see also the amenity community space at the bottom left and then the actual community rentable space in the far right. Next slide. So I'm going to focus a bit on Building B, which is the one that's still in construction. We are about seventy-eight percent complete on that building. As I mentioned, we're expected to complete the whole site by end of December, early Jan. But we will officially finish this building mid-November. So there's a bit of side work to do after that. And then just to wrap up all the final touches of the building, next slide. So photos of that in construction right now. I was there on Wednesday when I took these photos. So you can still see a bit of Building A on the left, but Building B is the darker building to the other side. And then closer view, we have started taking down scaffolding yesterday. No, this morning, sorry, this morning. So all that's actually clear right now, which is exciting. Next slide. So for the stuff that we haven't built yet, here are some renderings. Some of the podium of Building B facing the caltrain. We have just community gardens, benches, tables, grilling and some play structures for children. Next slide. And then this is the community garden on Middlefield that the health center manages that we're redoing. So just a rendering of that, we should start working on that in two months. Next slide. That's it. Questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, council members. Please.
Thank you and nice seeing you again. Can you repeat what's the percentage of applicants from North Fair Oaks? I didn't catch that.
Three percent.
Three percent.
So at, there was two thousand, it was actually almost like twenty-five hundred applications. Out of those, seventy-nine percent were from Redwood City. And then out of those, three percent were North Fair Oaks.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Council.
Everett and I are on the same train of thought. I read that in the presentation in the pre-reads and I was a little disappointed to see how few it was from North Fair Oaks, given that it is in North Fair Oaks. And my question to you is, are those North Fair Oaks members being prioritized in terms of these applications? Or is it just whoever submitted them first?
So it's neither. So we do a lottery system that whomever wanted to apply could apply. And then we just ran a lottery, so it's completely random. Last I checked, so three percent of the two thousand roughly is about, it was a hundred and twenty-seven applications. I believe in the top a hundred fifty of them were North Fair Oaks residents.
I'm trying to zoom out of my mouth quickly, but that seems good. Okay.
Yeah, I think when I say three percent is three percent of two thousand, so that seems like very small. But when you start zooming in, it's actually not that.
Well, and then with the lottery, I think.
And it's a lottery.
If there's like fifty from North Fair Oaks and that.
But I will say, we've been interviewing and some of them have denied the units because it wasn't a good fit for them. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, we offer, if they don't take it and don't want it, then we can force them. So we just hop on to the next person. But yeah, we already received a couple.
And again, just to like, thank you for all that you're doing on this update. This is amazing and it's so exciting to see people moving in very, very, very soon.
Councilmember Daley, you had your hand up?
Were people, can you break down at all the request for number of bedrooms? Or like how big or small the requests were for more of the two, three bedrooms than studios, families versus, you know?
So a lot of, so the biggest units, the three bedrooms are the ones in highest demand because we've noticed that there's a lot of multi-generational homes within North Fair Oaks. So those are the ones that are in highest demand. So the three bedrooms, two baths, they're a little bit larger in square footage and typically because we knew that we were going to have a lot of families that are multi-generational. Exact stats, I don't have those off the top of my head.
Did, were the people that were applying and looking, did they need parking onsite?
It varied. So we did three community meetings prior to the application even opening and then an additional one partnered with El Concilio to work on applications. So there was a night with, I was here with El Concilio and we were just filling applications with laptops provided by the local library. And through that process, I learned that a lot of people actually don't have that many cars. They're just walking within the neighborhood. So they weren't too stressed about cars, but there were a lot of people that were stressed. So the same thing that we're doing with the units, we were doing with park, parking, it's a lottery. It's something that's agreed to for one year. So every year, there's going to be a rotating lottery for the parking because we do understand that it's, it's a, it's a commodity that a lot of people like to take advantage. But in addition to that, we're providing free Clipper cards to all residents on the site. And I believe on the funding secured, we can provide free Clipper cards for the next five years.
Okay. I think that's it. And thank you. It's so great to see you back.
I've got a question.
Yes, please.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'd love to see that we've got some, some new development here. This is wonderful, especially since helping the community. I'm curious, I noticed that many of the units are significantly below AMI and I think that's great. What are we charging roughly? What is, what does these numbers end up being for a one-bedroom, two- or three-bedroom? What do they end up coming out to be roughly?
Well, that's, it varies because it depends on AMI. So we're going as low as fifteen and going as high as eighty percent. But even including these eighty percent, we reduce those rents by ten percent just to be able to accommodate to the, to the community better. So there's a massive chart that has all of that that I don't know by memory, but I believe the lowest rent goes to like eight hundred dollars. And the highest it goes, I'm going to say is twenty-four and that's for like a three, two-bed unit.
Got it.
Yeah, I can provide you all a chart through email if you all like.
That would be great. Thank you.
Would be wonderful. Thank you.
Any more comments, George, questions?
No, just thanks for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Aponte, you had your hand up?
Yeah, for the community space, what type of program do you envision for that? Like corporate private events or like a Know Your Rights seminar that we were talking about earlier?
I mean, technically it could be either. So when we were in the early phases of the, of the design of the building and you were meeting with the community, one of the biggest things we heard was there was no place to gather. Redwood City, I was born and raised here, there aren't that many places to gather. And the few places that we did have have been decommissioned. So essentially, it's just an open room that the community has access to. Obviously, we're prior in North Fair Oaks, community members. So you can go and have a keen sand there, you can have a seminar in there, you can just rent it for an art class. That space is pretty big and also has a divider in the middle of the room, so it can become two rooms. Has a full kitchen, a full bathroom and has access to the front patio. We're providing over a hundred and twenty chairs, about twenty tables. So we're just providing the most flexible space for whatever the community needs. And we're not charging for the space. The only thing we're charging is for the planning of the space afterwards and that's it.
Thank you.
Great, I want to reserve it for my birthday. Great. Any other comments? Yes.
Were, were any, were construction workers able to park onsite or were they all parking outside of the area? So on the other side of, or on Middlefield Road? And I'm just wondering, has any traffic study, was anything started based on the construction people coming in and out of that very difficult intersection there?
Yeah, it's a very difficult intersection. It's a hard question to answer because it varied and the major change was the fire. So we were fully onsite, our crew was fully onsite, parking onsite. But when the fire happened, the fire department said no more. So they said that it was a combustible item that was onsite. And the only cars that are allowed to be onsite were ones that are considered a toolbox, AKA construction crew that had actual equipment within their, within their trucks. So now that we've reached TCO or Temporary Certificate of Occasional Security for Building A, they've allowed all cars to be onsite now. So now we're having crew back onsite. A lot of them were being parked along the train area. And then we worked with the health center to have some spots there. And then some parked in the neighborhood as well. But we, at peak, we were a hundred and thirty crew. Right now, we're in the forty range, so we're not as big as we once was. So we're starting to slow down a little bit because we're finishing.
I, I do have other questions. Did I hear you correctly that you're not taking the applications at this point?
We are not. So we opened applications for about three weeks and we only have a hundred and seventy-nine units and we received over two thousand applications. So right now, we're going through all of those because those individuals came to the community meetings, they submitted an application in the designated time. So once we depleted those two thousand, then we would open it up again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, if there are no other comments, is there, are there any public comments? Any people here to talk about this item?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are now going to move on to our reports because that was our last agenda item. Do we have a report out from District Four?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
A little louder.
How about now?
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Josh Lucas Gillian. I'll be reporting out for the district. Super quick updates. Our office, we are planning some Measure K listening sessions in the next couple of months. Dates and locations will be announced soon. These sessions will give organizations and community members opportunity to tell us about their needs and identify any gaps in services that our office can help fund. And lastly, our office is also supporting the San Mateo County Veterans Commission on their tenth annual Veterans Luncheon. The event will take place on November thirteenth at the Peninsula Italian American Social Club in San Mateo. The commission is currently trying to raise funds for the, to make the luncheon free for all attendees. And they're currently finalizing event details. Once the invitation is ready, I'm more than happy to send it to all the council members. And if, you know, any organizations or anyone that's willing to support that luncheon as a sponsor, please let me know. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing from me. We have a question from a council member.
Hi, Josh. Question, what is the budget for District Four for Measure K funds?
I believe for this year, this fiscal year, around five hundred thousand.
Any other questions or comments for Josh, District Four? No? Thank you. Thank you very much. We will then move on to our council. Just a plug. Just. Sounds better. Our council members report out, I'll, I'll just pretend it's all, it keeps speaking. George, do you have anything to report out this evening?
I do not.
You do not? Okay. Councilmember Whitney, do you have anything to report out? Their report, or, or, now, daily? Or councilmember Olivia's? Councilmember recently? Councilmember Aponte?
Is it? Uh, yeah, I have a quick report. Like I mentioned with the first presentation, Kathleen and I spent Saturday morning walking down Middlefield Road and we look forward to doing that again, getting more materials from Faith in Action. Again, reiterating, you're not presenting ourselves as part of the council, just, you know, doing our own work. And then with my other hat as a union leader, I met up with the Multicultural Institute, I think last week. And they are having a beer tasting fundraiser in East Palo Alto on October third from five to eight P M. So there's a QR code, I have a flyer here if you guys want to check it out. And what else? Oh, and then something I brought up, I think a couple of months ago, that maybe we can discuss at a future date, are the flock safety cameras that have been installed in North Fair Oaks? There's a couple on Hampshire, on Oak Side, near where I live, Fair Oaks Avenue. So yeah, they're like popping up everywhere. I don't know if they're on, but I think one is on. But something to consider with this, all this talk about immigration is, block safety has been accused of breaking laws in installation and use of automatic license plate reader cameras. So there's a lot of privacy violations, illegal data sharing with federal agencies and a disregard for local surveillance ordinances. So it's just something to keep in mind. I know the Board of Supervisors approved that contract. So whenever it comes up for renewal, I think that's something that we should look into. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do have some report out information. The video that was done on ABC Channel Seven, we got a lot of positive feedback from the merchants. It wasn't me, it wasn't just, it was coverage on the, no, 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 the video was not about me. I hope I didn't embarrass the council by, but I did get, get some feedback from the merchants. So they are getting some, some feedback, some good. Yeah, so that's good. So let's keep that circulating. Josh, we posted on your social media, please. Yeah, yeah, so.
Also, as someone who does media? Also, as someone who does media, I just feel like everyone here needs to know, most pieces are like thirty to forty-five seconds max. This one was five minutes. I have not seen a piece this long. And Juan Carlos did such a great job, and like, let's all just give him an applause right now.
No, no, thank you, thank you. It's five minutes, but it took many days uh to do that. Or the, the crew came many visits to, to, to do that. So anyway, I just wanted to give positive feedback in the community. Hopefully, we can keep the positive image going and, and growing. Uh, and it's just another uh way for us to encourage our, getting our, our merchants out there exposed, you know, exposing their product, their services, and all the positivity in the community. Um, and talking about positivity, I also want to invite everyone this Sunday, September twenty-eighth from three to six, the North Fair Oaks Beautification Association is throwing a end-of-summer party for North Fair Oaks. So I would like to see everyone there. Wine, music, food, drinks, and a bouncy house. You cannot beat that kind of party. It's a great time, especially the wine and bouncy house. That's a great combination, yeah. So it's a great event, guys. It's at the North Fair Oaks Community Playground, which is in the corner of Edison and Fair Oaks Avenue. Uh, three to six, it's a great community of, event. It's supported by a lot of lo, local businesses, uh, supermarkets, uh, pizza place, they, everyone chips in. It's a great community event, and the weather should be nice, so three, three to six on Sunday. And also, um, November second, I know I'm, I'm, I'm going ahead a little bit, but I just want everybody to mark your calendars. Saturday, November seventh, um, Casa Circulo is gonna do the Day of the Dead, the Dia de los Muertos, which is a tremendous, most beautiful celebration, I feel, in my opinion, anyway, in the community in downtown Redwood City. So mark those in your calendars. We're two months away, November second, Saturday. It's an afternoon and evening event. Sunday, thank you. Uh, it is November second, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Sunday.
November second, great. So just to mark your calendars, I'll bring it up again the next month's meeting, but just so you can mark your social calendar. Got that, Josh? Excellent. Good. If there are no other comments?
Through the chair, I think Vice Chair Salmon. George, do you have your hand up?
George?
I had it up. I had a very important question, Ashley, um, about this bouncy house. Is there age restriction? I mean?
Uh, no, but they might have a, a alcohol um fertilizer, they are just here.
Okay, so no, thank you.
Yeah. I'm, I'm more concerned of a, of a wa, a weight restriction. If you noticed in the video, I ate a lot of bread and tacos on there, so I'm still trying to lose that.
I need that.
Yeah, that gotta need that, let me tell you. Hard to take off, yeah. All right, guys, well, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Entertained. We do so.
All right, stand adjourned. Thank you, and we will meet next month.